All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the hearing for the Open Space Act Regulations. We'll get started in a few minutes.
Buenas tardes a todos. Vamos a empezar en algunos minutitos, sí?
Yeah, you know, it is kind of broken, but I think I'm going, I basically am answering to say, yes, all right.
Okay, let's get underway.
Muy bien, vamos empezando. Buenas tardes a todos. Bienvenidos a esta audiencia sobre regulaciones para espacios.
CMR fifty-two. For those desiring translation services, select the appropriate language by clicking the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. So, welcome. My name is Kurt Gertner. I am the Assistant Secretary for Environmental Policy for the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and I will serve as the presiding officer for this hearing. This is the public hearing on draft open space regulations proposed by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs at three oh one CMR fifty-two. The proposed regulations on which we will be taking comment today are a statutory requirement of an act preserving open space in the Commonwealth, otherwise known as the Open Space Act, which was passed by the legislature in two thousand and twenty-two. Nothing in the act or the proposed regulations to implement it changed the requirement under the ninety-seventh amendment to the Constitution of the Commonwealth for the legislature to approve by a two-thirds roll call vote any change in use or disposition of land subject to Article ninety-seven. Rather, the act and the proposed regulations provide for the provision of information to the public and the legislature around any proposed disposition or change in use such that this information can be considered. We are recording the meeting for the purpose of accuracy. We do not expect to post the recording. I declare this virtual public hearing to be open at one oh two P M. On January sixteen, two thousand and twenty-five. We are here to receive public comment on the draft Open Space Act regulations proposed by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs at three oh one fifty-two. You may present comment this afternoon. If you wish to speak, please indicate that in the chat feature at the bottom of the screen. Please be sure to that your name is shown accurately so that we know who to call upon. We will call upon commenters in the order that we receive the comments. When called upon, you will be able to unmute. Before making a comment, please state your name and affiliation, if any. Please limit your comments to five minutes and address your comments to the draft regulations. You may also send in written comments by email to energy and environmental affairs at michael dot gender and two at mass dot gov. Please include your name and contact information and refer to three oh one CMR fifty-two in the subject line. You might also submit comments by mail addressed to Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Attention, Michael Gendron, one hundred Cambridge Street, Street, Suite nine hundred, Boston, Mass. Zero two one one four. All written comments, including those submitted electronically and by mail, must be received by Energy and Environmental Affairs by five P M. On January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. A copy of the notice of this hearing with the instructions for submitting written comments is available on the EEA website. We will place this website and email address for written comments in the chat. The following are present today to receive comment on behalf of EEA. Mike Gendron, Open Space Act Coordinator, Ivy Powers, Deputy Legislative Director, Johannes Buchanan, Assistant Secretary for Legislative Affairs, and Bob Wilbur, Director of the Division of Conservation Services. The agenda for today's public hearing is as follows. First, Mike Gendron will provide a brief overview of the draft regulations. After that, we'll open the floor for comment. Let me turn now to Mike.
Thank you, Kurt. The legislature enacted an act preserving open space in the Commonwealth, also known as the Public Lands Preservation Act or the Open Space Act in two thousand and twenty-two. The act codified some elements of existing EEA policy and created new requirements for public entities seeking legislative authority for a disposition or change in use of land or an interest in land subject to Article ninety-seven. Among these requirements were notification to the public and the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, an alternatives analysis, and a provision of replacement land to avoid a net loss of Article ninety-seven land. Additionally, the act included provisions related to waiver of the requirement to provide replacement land and a provision of funding in lieu of replacement land. The act required EEA to issue regulations to implement these provisions, and we'll be accepting comments on these regulations today.
All right. Thank you, Mike. I'll now open the hearing to public comment. If you wish to speak, please indicate that in the chat feature at the bottom of the screen. Please be sure your name as shown is accurate so we know who to call upon. We will call upon commenters in the order we receive the requests. When called upon, you will be able to unmute. Before making a comment, please state your name and affiliation, if any. Please limit your comments to five minutes and address your comments to the draft regulations. Megan, can you please call on the first commenter?
Yes, Glenn Iard. You are currently allowed to talk.
Hi, thank you. My name is Glenn Ears. I live in Greenfield, Mass., and I appreciate you offering public or accepting public comments today on the draft regulations. My concern is that different public lands have different ecological qualities and other characteristics, and that the removal or disposition of some lands be evaluated properly so that the net benefit is a positive gain for the citizens of the Commonwealth. And the example I will use is that for almost all of our public lands, they are currently in a state that is just considered administratively protected. I understand that there are conservation lands under the stewardship of state agencies, and that there are other lands under municipalities as well. But if we talk specifically about the state-owned lands, they currently are considered to be weakly protected from degradation through a very weak administrative process that is essentially subject to WIM. And if those lands are further protected, let's say through designating them as a reserve, then what exactly, what level of protection does that ensure? And if those lands are then transferred, does that same level of protection also, is that also required for any replacement lands? So if lands become permanently protected through more than an administrative process, so let's say through a forever wild conservation restriction, will that land then be removed from that status? And will any replacement land be required to have that same level of permanent protection going forward? And if there's a waiver allowed for that removal from permanent protection, how will that be valued? How will the equivalent value be determined so that the net result is a positive impact on both the climate, biodiversity, recreation, and all of the other things that permanently protected lands can provide? And I guess I'll use the example of degradation, land degradation, in this situation, whereas almost all lands that are owned by the Commonwealth and most of the lands owned by municipalities are currently available for degradation by commercial timber extraction, resource exploitation through logging. And if we have determined that some lands are off limits to that kind of degradation, then if those lands are removed from the public domain, they should be replaced by lands that are no longer subject to degradation as well. So I think there needs to be a clear mechanism for evaluating the level of protection that the current land has and to ensure that the lands that are being replaced from that disposition have at least an equivalent level of protection, or in order for it to be a superior public benefit, they would have a higher level of protection, statutory protection, for instance, or through working with a land trust for a forever wild conservation restriction. And I just want to say in closing that I want to applaud the state for rolling out the Forest Reserves Program, the grant program, out of your office. I think that, to my understanding, that is the first time in the history of the Commonwealth that significant funding has been provided for permanent reserve establishment. And I really would like to see that program expanded significantly, and a group of activists are requesting that two hundred and fifty million dollars be put into the Environmental Bond Bill to expand that forest reserve program, and that it apply to both state and private lands through land trusts. So those are my comments, and I will submit more detailed comments after I complete a thorough review of the draft regulations. Thank you very much.
And I thank you for comments, Glenn. Megan, can you call on our next commenter?
Yes, so our next commenter has asked that I recite their questions, if that's okay, since they don't have audio capacity at the moment. So this is from Lee Enoch from Mass Live. They would like an explanation to, in layperson's terms, of the relevancy of the Open Space Act regulations and what they are for average citizens in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Also, what significance, if any, does these proposed open space regulations have for Western Mass and specifically Hampton County? So that was from Lee.
So, Megan, we're done? For the benefit of those participating today, we are taking public comment. We are not responding to public comments in the moment. So we will be responding after January twenty-second to comment received, and the sorts of items mentioned by our prior commenter here would be addressed as part of that effort. Let me turn, Megan, can you call on our next commenter?
We do not have another commenter.
Would anyone else like to make public comment?
Yes, so David is next. David, you should be allowed to unmute.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm unmuted. My name is David Bosanowski. I'm the president of the Falmouth Heights Maravista Neighborhood Association down here in Cape Cod, Falmouth. My particular interest in this change of regulations is relative to our position regarding South Coast Wind and our community in Falmouth Heights being a variant for their cables to be pulled through our Article ninety-seven parklands. I'm deeply concerned about that parcel of land. It's protected by a deed of gift to the town, which was then dedicated as an Article ninety-seven property. And I'm very concerned about the degradation of the protections that we might have relative to this Article ninety-seven property. I feel that the way the article is written even prior to these changes has, leaves too much authority in the secretary's sole hands. The secretary is a chair of multiple organizations under her command, and the Article ninety-seven seems to always revert to the secretary as the sole discretion on all of these issues. And I don't believe that's correct. I'm personally opposed to anything that would take, diminish the citizens of the Commonwealth's right to clean air and our open lands. And I think this, that the way it appears to me, and it's written in very legal language, and it's very difficult for me to compare the changes to the actual article that is in place at the moment. It's relatively complicated. But it appears to me that it's trying to make it easier for third-party developers, let's call it that, to acquire Article ninety-seven property, which I don't believe is in the interest of anyone of the Commonwealth. I will put my questions in writing and my comments in writing and submit them by the twenty-second. And I'm certainly hoping that the legislature, which has these, requires a two-thirds votes to make these changes, you know, takes all these into consideration. That two-thirds vote was put in place to instill the importance of these changes, and I'm hoping our legislatures, members of the legislature, take note. I want to thank you very much for your time on this.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment today, and that which you will submit in writing in the future. And Megan, can you call on our next party?
We do not have a next party as of now.
Right, for those fifty or so folks who are online, if anyone else would like to make a public comment, please indicate in the chat. Megan, I think we'll wait five minutes or so, see if anyone else would like to make comment.
Yeah, so while we're waiting, Lee Enoch had another question that I'm going to go ahead and read directly. It is, quote, "Also, here is a question from the news editor Daniel Jackson of Mass Live. What are the nature of the changes, and are there any groups from Western Mass that speak about these proposed regulations? What will the impact of these regulations be?"
Yeah, I think the question is understood. We will respond to these comments made, including that one, after the twenty-second.
And Kurt, we do have a hand raised by Heidi Ritchie.
Okay. Heidi, your public comment?
Thank you so much, Kurt. I'm Heidi Ritchie, Director of Policy and Advocacy at Mass Audubon. I want to express my thanks to EEA for drafting these regulations and putting them out for public review, as well as offering this additional opportunity for input. We will be submitting comments in writing. And we're very happy that this law passed after so many years of efforts. It's, you know, vitally important that we protect the Article ninety-seven lands as much as possible. I think our comments are going to revolve around transparency and and input from both the public and the entity that currently holds the conservation land and how the draft regulations could be improved in that regard. One thing I did just want to note is the concern about in lieu fee payments, particularly what I've heard from local officials, conservation commissioners, et cetera, that you know, if we couldn't find the replacement land prior to the disposition in a community, why do we think it would be any easier for them to do it within three years after the fact? And in particular, the concern that the Conservation Commission, the municipality, is then on the hook to provide that replacement land or otherwise lose eligibility for some open space and other grants from EEA when they were not the entity that proposed the impact in the first place? And, you know, may not even, according to the way the vote is now, you know, they may not even have voted that the land was surplus to their needs. So that's a concern, you know, that it's very difficult and costly to find replacement land, and is it fair to put that burden on a municipality? It just points to the importance of a really rigorous alternatives analysis and adequate funding. If indeed we need to go the in-lube in very limited circumstances, we're not sure that a hundred and ten percent is going to be enough, given the rising values of land and the associated due diligence costs. So thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Appreciate the public comment. Megan, do we have another party ready to comment?
We do not currently.
Again, we'll wait a few minutes and see if anyone else would like to comment.
All right, Carol Zaiman, you are allowed to talk.
Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. Okay. I just have a question about changing the wording of this law that has protected public spaces for residents, especially when it applies to the shores of Massachusetts and specific Cape Cod. I just don't even understand why anybody would want to change things that would put those in jeopardy, especially when some of these spaces they're trying to commercialize or industrialize with cables. Literally will change forever the shoreline and worse put people's lives at risk due to magnetic fields that I think are associated with cancer. And when they're, especially when they're very crowded neighborhoods that don't even have space for the construction trucks, let alone the traffic that travels down these shore roads where they're going to be putting industrial-sized cables. So I'm actually talking very spontaneously, did not prepare this. I didn't think this was going to go so fast. This meeting seems very short. So I am really troubled by that. I thought New Jersey was winning on this. Mayors I know fought ruining the Jersey Shore. I don't even know anymore, but I think they did. I think Connecticut's doing pretty well. God bless them. I really think that the governor is making some tough decisions with these things. So with that aside, and other places, I'm trying to get it out as fast as I can. I'm not reading notes. I am very troubled that anyone would alter land that was provided by some wonderful human being that was true in Falmouth back in, I think it's nineteen-ten or something like that, it doesn't really matter, that was for the public good, and they will ruin it. And of course, they say they're not going to ruin it, but yes, they will because of magnetic fields. Worse, construction where the roadways are not suitable for construction, we can barely get people to be able to park to go to the beach. But we are public, and there's a lot of beaches in America, especially at the Cape, that are private. They would never be touched. But the one in the Heights that this article, if it is altered, would in fact destroy, as far as I am concerned, this beach and everything about the area. Why would we want to change that rule? It just doesn't make sense to me. Why destroy something that is wonderful and used by the public? What beach they are trying to destroy is a wonderful beach that the public are welcoming. There's a lot of beaches, and you know it, and I know it, all along the Cape and everywhere else in other states. I'm not picking on the Cape, trust me. But it's for private people, people, let's say, would have more money. Okay, that beach that they're trying to destroy in a very densely populated area, I don't know. I just say, what is going on? It's very, very troubling. I have grandkids, I have kids. I cannot bequeath to them what a Mrs. Goodwin bequeathed to Falmouth back in the early nineteen hundreds. Somebody now is going to take it away for windmills that are not even proven to work well in the Northeast. And certainly, we know this because Nantucket is fighting the good fight, and so is Osterville and other places. The blades fall, they destroy fish life, bird life, ambient life, okay? But they have a lot of other consequences. They're not even made in America for the most part. Hmm, so the profit is going out. And what's coming in is not even working. Nantucket found that out. Very painful for them. You know, we almost look at it like, oh, this is good for us, but not if our state changes Article ninety-seven. It's not good for anybody. So I'm sorry for being so long-winded. I wish I had notes. I really was just trying this out. I just decided to join. And I was so stunned when you keep saying, didn't it just start at one? And it's almost over and nobody's speaking, so I I don't know, maybe in the meantime I spoke too long, no apologies, by the way. But maybe I gave somebody else a chance to desire to speak, because I would have expected more speakers. Because it's not just beaches. Today, it's beaches. For me, it's a beach, but you'll be taking other lands. I know recently there was a case in Massachusetts that they were going to, like, give money to take land. It was for school. It was old, and they were going to replace it. So, you know, so somebody throws some bucks out there and says, okay, we're not going to have that land for that school anymore. We'll do something else. But to me, if it's about bribery, I don't think this is right. It's not right for the people, and I wish we would keep an eye on what's good for America, not international companies that are profiting off windmills. You, most people know they're mostly non-American, okay?
We are now approaching five minutes. And keep their comments to five minutes.
Oh, thank you. I thought I so overspeak. I didn't, so I don't have to apologize. That's a wonderful thing. Okay, I took my time and be it what it may, but I hope the state has the good sense not to get rid of this wonderful article that has protected public spaces. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Megan, do we have another party?
We do. We do. Greg Mazmanian, you are next. And give me one moment, Greg. All right, you should have the ability to go off mute.
Thank you, Megan, and good afternoon. Thank you for having this session. I think I I'm two from Falmouth, Massachusetts, and it's kind of interesting that we have not a great deal of speakers and most of them are from Falmouth. And I think that has something to say. And my concern is communications relative to what the proposal is in changes of Article ninety seven is really cloak and dagger to me. Had we not received from, I happen to be a member of the Falmouth Heights Maravista Neighborhood Association, had I not got something online from them telling us about this change, I would have never known. Now, I'm an avid reader of social media, avid reader of The Globe and other publications, and I've never seen anything listed. And I think what's shameful here is that something so integral, so important as identified by other speakers this afternoon is kind of going under the rug. And I, and to some extent, I I think it's a strategy. The less people know, the easier we can get it through. And I think it's frankly, it's shameful. So what I'm asking this organization, going forward, it's very important that you publicize what this proposal is and please put it in lay terms. I have read this article and what the proposal is. And I look at myself as a relatively intelligent individual. And I still have problems trying to understand all the pieces of it. So I think it's important that you go out to the public media, that you go out to The Globe and The Herald or any other organization to make sure that there's coverage so that people know. I walk my neighborhood quite frequently and I said, are you aware of Article ninety seven? And most of them are largely because of our organization has publicized what Article ninety seven is. And we know that our parks are protected by it. However, they don't know anything about this proposed change. And like I said, it's very important that your organization and the government of state of Massachusetts who are proposing this change, let people know so that they can voice their concern. I I don't know how many calls we had today, but it's probably less than a dozen. And you would think that, you know, for the state of Massachusetts, I would have thought there would have been a long line of thousands of people that would want to comment today on this webinar. So I think that tells a bit of a story. Not a lot of people know what's being proposed. So I think the challenge to you folks is to let people know so that they can make an intelligent decision on what is right, not only for them, but for the Commonwealth and for the common good of the people of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Megan, our next party?
Our next party is Bruce B. Bruce used to be able to go off mute.
Hi, is Bruce Book from Westboro, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, up till now, you know, a town could set aside land that valued for its scenic or historic or open space value and add in a reassurance that that land would be, wouldn't be repurposed unless the town itself saw fit to replace that land with land that in, again, in their own judgment was a suitable open space replacement. And if I understand this new proposal, the gist of it is it it takes away those reassurances by letting private developers and corporations initiate the process to repurpose that land. And of course, subsequently, to lobby legislators for their benefit. So, you know, the temptation to repurpose previously protected land is nothing new. And Article ninety seven up till now has wisely tempered that temptation. I think it's just, I want to say it's, I think it's short sighted to entertain this compromise. It really guts the intent of Article ninety seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Megan?
Yes, so Glenn Irs would like to make another comment. And since we don't have anyone else, I am going to.
Yep, and in the interest of of allowing full public comments, I think we can entertain that again. But I do want to allow folks who have not yet testified opportunity. So after Glenn, please do indicate if you have any interest in testifying today. Glenn?
Yeah, thank you very much for letting me have a second bite at the apple. I appreciate it. The one concern that has been raised already is the incredible level of discretion or authority that is provided to the secretary under these proposed regulations. And I believe that is actually a regulatory overreach, that the law did not intend to delegate all authority to a single person, the secretary, who is a political appointee. And I think that that really needs to be reevaluated so that there is a, at least in accordance with the Massachusetts Administrative Procedures Act, a valid appeal process to question bad decisions that may be made for political reasons by the secretary. So I think there has to be an appeal process that has to follow some kind of standard rules of adjudicatory practice and procedure. And I know, for instance, that DCR has never promulgated their own regulations for holding appeals, either formal or informal appeal process, although other agencies like DEP and, you know, other state agencies have their own set of regulations. As far as I know, DCR and DFW have never, have never passed those kind of appeal regulations. So that would be one comment would be that there needs to be an appeal process written right into the regulations and that the level of discretion provided to the secretary really frustrates the entire purpose of having a regulatory scheme because the secretary at a whim can overrule or suspend all of the regulatory requirements. And that that creates a completely unfair regulatory scheme. It it really renders the regulations meaningless if the if the key decision maker in this case is delegated all authority to suspend any any part of regulation. You know, it's similar to having zoning regulations and then say the zoning board can can modify or suspend any any part of these zoning regulations that they feel is necessary. That just eliminates the entire purpose of having regulations. So I think that needs to be cleaned up. There needs to be an appeal process. And the level of discretion needs to be dialed way back so that there is a process that citizens can actually participate in. And that raises another question of how, as other people have raised about this hearing, and, you know, how is the public going to be alerted to these? There, as far as I can see, there's no mechanism within the regulations that requires publication in a local newspaper, which is very common for holding any kind of hearing on public involvement. And there's no mention of publishing these kinds of things in the Environmental Monitor, which could be a way for the public to be alerted to those kinds of major decisions or major government action, which this would be considered one of or of that type. So I I think you need to rethink how the public will be involved. And there really needs to be full public involvement in this process. And then you need to take out the loopholes, as I see them, that defeat the purpose of having a regulatory scheme by giving the secretary so much discretion that it just becomes a loophole. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you again, Glenn. Megan, others?
Not currently, no.
All right, again, we'll wait a few minutes, see if anyone else chooses to testify. And if not, I'll close the hearing.
All right, Christine Rasmussen, thank you for raising your hand. You can go off mute.
Thank you. I also am shocked, quite frankly, about this hearing today, the lack of notification in the Berkshires. I live in Stockbridge and yes, we're a long way from Boston, but sometimes it feels really far. I think that Article ninety seven out here in the Berkshires is really a critical part of our heritage and of our decision making to protect land and to take away without a really strong dialogue and discussion and getting the information out to take away that process very much concerns me. And I can remember when, you know, the decision making that would go in at the legislative level to proposals to take ninety seven, Article ninety seven land and use it for something, even a school, and that was frowned on. And so to be able to have developers and others start a process and not have even been able to understand new regulations so that the developers can move forward with the public being in the dark is just not good government. And so I certainly support people who are saying that this needs to be pulled back, there needs to be discussion at the local level throughout the Commonwealth for boards and commissions to look at how the process is publicly working and how it can be made stronger or weaker without removing the underlying protections that have been part of our state and working well. So, thank you. I'm sorry, I just found out about this at the very last minute, so I'm all over the place. I'm not particularly prepared, but I do have to raise the issue of being opposed and why.
Okay, thank you, Christine, for your comments. Megan, next person?
Yes, so we have Lee, you should be allowed to go off mute if your audio is working again.
Oh, yes. Can you hear me? I got a bad connection. So just make sure I understand this. Once again, my name is Lee from Mass Live and Republican in Springfield, Massachusetts. Appreciate you take my comments here. Um, so the, there's going to be another hearing on the twenty second. Do I get that right? Is that why you couldn't answer a couple of questions? Something happened on January twenty second?
The public comment period closes on January the twenty second at five P M. This is the second and final public hearing.
Okay, and then, um, can I get a, can we get a full transcript of this before I can just relay this information to our readers?
The decision at this point has been not to provide a transcript or public posting of this material.
Okay, I'll I'll let them know. I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Megan, again, I would ask if there are any others for comment and I'll give it a minute or two and then I will close the hearing.
Currently, no folks have raised their hand. Actually, we got Jan. Or Janine, if I got you wrong, but you should be able to unmute.
I'm sorry, Megan, I missed the name, but if the party can unmute.
Jean S., last name Zelagwoski, you're unmuted. You can go ahead and speak now.
Jean, I don't believe you you're successfully muted or in any event, we can't hear you. Megan, perhaps if there's another party, we can come back to Jean?
Yeah, you got it. Currently, there is no other party. Oh, one moment, please. We just got Bob. Um, one moment, Bob. Bob, you should be able to unmute now.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, my name is Bob Schulthe, live in Senneville, Massachusetts, on the Cape. My only comment or question, I've heard you say that the decision has been made not to share the videos or transcripts. I would just request that the interest of transparency with the citizens, following up to many of the comments that are made here today, that you post the video, both of the original December seventeenth and this Zoom webinar on the website so the public can view what's been said by other citizens. Forcing people to wait until you decide when you want to release the comments is unfair to citizens. And it's the common practice throughout the Commonwealth in many of the towns and various organizations and committees that videos are posted. Why you would hold those from the public is beyond me. And I would just simply request that those are posted for the public's viewing. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. I would remind folks that we will be responding to all of the comments received. Anyone else?
All right, Frank Rizotti, you should be allowed to mute now. Again, Frank Rizotti.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
My comments will be very brief because I I just learned of this and I really want to read the proposed changes a little bit more so I can somewhat speak intelligently on it and maybe send my comments before the twenty second. What I would say, though, is that a key element of a public hearing, to me, seems to be the public. And it strikes me that there's virtually no notification, no knowledge, nothing in the local papers, nothing spoken about at at the select board meetings or or where people are aware of what these proposed changes to Article ninety seven are. It's irrelevant what I think about the proposed project, South Coast Wind or or any of these projects, listening to the people from Western Mass. Those details are best understood locally, those details are best understood by the public. And I think it's important somehow, someone mentioned it earlier, is if it wasn't for my local neighborhood association, I wouldn't know that this was, as I understand it now, the second public hearing. So I I'll just leave with this comment. To me, again, someone mentioned earlier, maybe Greg, about cloak and dagger. This is exactly what people are upset about, is that these things seem to be done. And when they're complete is when we learn about it. A public meeting, you need to notify the public. And that that should be incumbent on people that are having the meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizotti. Megan, our next person?
Yes. I, we're going to try Jan Zelagwoski again. Jan, if you want to go off mute.
Hello?
Yes, we can. Great, thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can.
Sorry, and I got these two cockapoos in here. Sorry, I'm trying to silence them. I I apologize in the in the delay of actually attending this. I just became aware of it, similar to other people's comments about, you know, lack of, you know, really aggressive, assertive notification to the public. I am a resident here in Falmouth at Falmouth Heights. And I know that perhaps you don't want to talk about the particular project that is looking, you know, appears to be fast-tracked in behind closed doors. Again, you know, we're all constituents, we're all taxpayers and we have a right and everyone else has a responsibility and accountability to ensure that, you know, conversations actually occur and that and that these issues are vetted appropriately. It's very, very disconcerting that these things come about and without fair notification, without fair due process. We really need, you wonder why Trump got elected. I mean, the reality is, you know, we need to really hold ourselves accountable and and oblige ourselves to due diligence and due accountability. I appreciate the moment of being unmuted and saying this. And I'm just, I will write to my legislators, whatever that's. And I'm just, I will write to my legislators, whatever that's worth. Because, again, we're all citizens and all taxpayers and we have a right to know what's going on that's going to affect our lifestyle. Thank you, I appreciate. Is there any kind of, as you close your session, can anyone just do a quick summary? Because again, in the absence of, you know, aggressive, assertive notification of this, I'm coming in at the tail end and so I apologize for that. But can someone do a quick summary at the end of this? I would really appreciate that. Thank you. You can mute me now.
Megan?
We do not have anyone currently with their hands raised or indicating in the chat that they would like to make a comment.
As before, I'll give it a minute or two and then we'll see with the closing. All right. Last call, anyone joining us today would like to provide comment? All right. Hearing none, there being no other comments, I declare this public hearing to be closed at 1:49 PM on January 16, 2025. Again, if you wish, you may submit written comment by email or regular mail. Written comments must be received by 5:00 PM on January 22, 2025. Thank you for your comments and attendance and the testimony provided today. And also, thank you to those providing translation services, much appreciated. All right, thank you all.